Hey, we call our Christmas week board of supervisors December twenty first, twenty twenty one to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Staines and myself, Zach Holley are your supervisors. We have Lisa Smith, our county auditor, and Lauren Beck helping with the automation and Lynn Gokee, our administrative assistant. And it's a different day today. David Dreyer has nothing to present to us today. So our first item on the agenda today is Luann Gokee, our administrative assistant. Good morning, Teresa.
Good morning, Teresa.
We see on our screen.
We're live today. See, but we can't hear you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar for today, one o'clock this afternoon is a Together We Build Steering Committee meeting, along with their building committee, and that's for Jack, and that'll be downstairs in their meeting room. Six o'clock tonight is the Conservation Board meeting at Hurstville, and that's for Larry. Tomorrow, Wednesday, December twenty second at nine AM is an IRS meeting by Zoom for Larry. Thursday, December twenty third, all the state offices will be closed, including court. The rest of courthouse will be open at two oh five. The supervisor will have a special board meeting to open bids on the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center project. Friday, December twenty fourth, the courthouse is closed for the holiday. We'll reopen on Monday, December twenty seventh, and our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, December twenty eighth at nine AM. Business I have today, I have one appointment to take care of, which is for Eastern Iowa Tourism Association. We are allowed with our membership to appoint one director for a year, and Mike has graciously agreed to be that director.
I need another meeting.
So looking for a motion to appoint Mike as a director for the, the ATA.
So moved.
I would second. All those in favor?
Okay.
I.
I just don't vote.
Good idea.
Mike abstaining.
The only other thing is, I don't know.
Motion carrying the EMS.
Thank you. EMS board, I've been going to them, but I, there's no appointments, so not, that's just open to.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Okay, second kind of business I have is to set the annual meeting date for the Green Island Drainage Districts meeting. And I've been going back and forth with the DNR and at Britton from the Federal Wildlife. So the date we put with the work is February first. Looking for motion to set the date for the Green Island Drainage Districts annual meeting, eleven o'clock on February first.
That's a reading day.
That, that's Tuesday, February first.
I would so move. Second, did you, did you need a time?
Eleven o'clock, yeah.
We have a motion, the second to set the Green Island Drainage District meeting at February first at eleven. All those in favor?
Right.
I, motion carrying.
That's all I have for you.
When I was next door, Assessor Coos said that he thought that their meeting was going to be on January sixth. Or the conference board.
Okay.
He said he'd let us know for sure that that was the tentative date for that meeting.
I know we had received a couple of emails from Kurt Kramer too about that. I think that's all been cleared several times, but did we find what he needed or?
Let me, I can, I can address that. I have been working with County Attorney Davenport in regards to that request. I do have some questions because it is talking about where the two breaches were at, and they want to take the dirt from those two areas and put it someplace else. Both Sarah and I have some questions and concerns with that. And going back to looking at the letter that was wrote that we divested. So yesterday, Sarah and I spent some time and we came up with a map. We looked at where those two breaches were and what they're suggesting, and Sarah is going to be doing some further investigation. And as far as when we were looking for all of this information, I did come across the map. Well, I shouldn't say I, actually Luann did in a file. I think we may have a map that will suffice current as far as his desire to know what the boundaries of the drainage district is. So I think Luann has a big map in her file, and I think it's pretty important.
Remember how it all went, but there was Kurt was there, and there was also a gentleman from the Corps that time, the meeting. He explained it, the whole process from the get-go when that breach happened.
Well, the breach is actually right now in state of Iowa land.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, so I guess that was my question to Sarah is if it's on their land and you've divested that part of the levee, I don't know why you have to give approval.
Well, I think they give all of the, they bought all the landowners out of one down there, correct?
That's, I don't, they have long-term, there's, it's still owned by the landowners, but they have a long-term reserve easement on it?
I think they bought a lot of that floodplain out down there. I thought they did too.
It must not have come up, come through yet then.
I thought they bought most of it out.
They have bought some from Iowa Natural, from the Heritage Foundation and such, but I think there still are some property owners. But I think that they did is they took an easement unless those closings haven't happened yet in.
I think they would have, yeah. It's been long enough.
But um. The levee, they wouldn't, they're not digging out any dirt, they're just taking the levee down to the original level. And they're going to use that, I think, in a parking lot three, so to keep it up on floodplain is what they're talking about, but.
I'm talking north on the river, right on the river where the breach were actually, the levee, floodway going across broke, and it's actually flowing in a different spot, and they said it was fine. That's what I thought we were talking about.
But the Green Island Drainage District is no longer in existence or not?
No, it is in existence because you just set a meeting.
Is this part, is that part of that then, even though it belongs to the state?
Where the two breaches are, yes, that is part of the Great Island Drainage District, yes.
And, and they usually have representation in our meetings. And that is the question.
So we do, Sarah is doing further research. She was going to go back and look at the Iowa code when it concerns drainage districts and such, so.
I made another suggestion. On the other side of that highway, for the watershed area, I'd like to see a silt area, silt concrete in, which would be a deeper section. And you could use one part of the levee, but dig a deeper and do several areas like that. And so water can flow back in there and drop its sediment, and then they could be cleaned, you know, every four or five years or whatever it takes, but.
Is that around fifty-two, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Where would they did the rear road bridge?
Yeah, between the bridge and lower south of that. But if we could just get an area where the river can kind of settle back into it and just drop some of that sediment before it gets into Mississippi. Yeah, just to clean up water. Because I've come down Mississippi on a boat, and you're talking about the big muddy Mississippi. And when you get to the Makoguta, you could see this chocolate water coming in to the Mississippi. It looks fairly clean compared to the Makoguta. So I mean, there, I mean, I'm just looking for anything we can do anywhere on the river. And I know they did three of them at Lake Dalhuy when they redid the dam, and the small streams coming in. They just have an area that's, actually it's like a boat ramp, but it's level. And you can back, drive an excavator out, back a dump truck in, and then you dig all the way along one side. And that's where the silt settles in before it gets to the main area. And it's just a good way of getting that dirt out of there. And if there's more, less silt in the river, there's more room for water, so.
Be a good idea to bring up when the, when the authorities are there, Corin. Conservation Board.
And maybe you could get a next door, a picture of that area and kind of put where you're thinking.
Okay, that's good because I don't know where I'm thinking yet, but I just anywhere.
Or even GIS.
Yeah.
I would get with Christina.
I mean, if there's, if there's a situation where we don't want to take that levee down at this time, there's an opportunity to do something and get the fill that they need. And after that, the fill could go to Armfields or wherever, just to.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they're proposing. I just, I know that they want something from, from you as supervisors, and I just trying to make sure that what our legal authority is.
And Sarah is going to give us some information on that.
I just think issue that they're talking about is upriver on the Makoguta River further where the major flood was that time, and it took, it breached that levee that come across the river, basically, made, made the flow of the river just over here instead of there. And the DNR had said they weren't going to maintain it, it's fine.
Yeah.
Good.
And part of that, across the river, is one of the biggest sand dunes on the Mississippi. It starts from Valium, comes down, and that whole bottom down there in the Green Island area, it's I don't know, forty, fifty foot of sand under it. So if you build a levee on top of it, it'll hold the water for a little bit, but the pressure, it just it goes undefeated, and it doesn't matter what you do, you're not going to fix that. And that was part of the reason they're buying everything out because it's even with a good levee there, about two or three days later, it's it's just filling up, coming right up through the ground.
Well, we'll wait and get information from Sarah. Doesn't look like we have any visitors or citizens. So we'll recess for a couple of minutes till Lynn Mopes gets here, joined by Lynn. This time we reconvene the meeting, we're being joined by Lynn Mopes, our Coordinator of Services.
Good morning. So I am here to review the governing board meeting yesterday that was held for the Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services region. Jack and I were both in attendance.
For the long meeting.
It was a long meeting. There were a lot of decisions to be made. I noticed that even more because I was taking the minutes.
Julie was sick, so we got swayed into taking the minutes for the meeting.
Yeah, so, but there are a lot of positive decisions made to help the region continue to move forward in service delivery to people and, and making sure we're trying to get the word out there. So David Farmer gave his monthly financial report, and currently the fund balance for the entire region is about eight point four million dollars, which is higher than I think we actually would like to have it. Kind of an odd thing to say, we have too much money, but keeping in mind with the legislation in Senate File six nineteen that tells us that we have to have our fund balance at a certain percentage at the end of each of the next three fiscal years, and then forward after that, at the end of this current fiscal year, so June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, our remaining money should be at forty percent of our total expenditures, and right now we're well above that. And so we will keep an eye on what this fund balance is. The, on the report that David provided to the board, it shows Jackson County is having a balance of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars, so that's our portion of that total fund balance.
So how does that transition happen with the coming off of property taxes and going on to state funding?
Well, we've gotten two payments now, did David say?
Yes, we would have gotten one for the first and the second quarter.
We're going to be having a meeting with all of the supervisors from all of the counties in the region to kind of go over the transition from pooling to pooling our money. And, but right now, Kim is a little concerned in setting a date because of the upswing in the virus. So, but we're going to have that probably within the next couple of months.
So the difference being the state sends us quarterly payments. And with the property tax, those are six month payment, right? Or did it all come at once, or how, I mean?
Generally every six months, I would say, in taxes or during which Julie said. I could say that the bulk of that money does come in, say, taxes are paid in March, so that would be apportioned in April. Taxes would come in then, you know, the next time in September and be apportioned in October. But you also have to understand that right now, people are trying to pay their property taxes here in December so they can deduct it off of their taxes. So, I mean, that money is actually coming in monthly, but the bulk of it is coming in to.
I just wonder if it makes a difference on the fund balance because you have more scheduled payments coming in as opposed to, like you said, some of the half.
Yeah.
Right, half and half.
I, I think from a cash flow standpoint, obviously, it's different. What the state is interested in looking at is at the end of fiscal year, what's the remaining amount in the bank, basically? Is the fund balance they're most concerned with? The regions, I would say, are more concerned with assuring that we have cash flow throughout. And so one of the major concerns is two more fiscal years. Current legislation directs regions to only have five percent in their bank account at the end of fiscal year. That's five percent to meet operating expenses.
Until we cut it three months.
Yeah, for three months.
So anyway, we talked about it yesterday about the legislation, and Ken said he pretty sure that the legislators will take some action on that. But as we've learned in the past, you can't count on anything with state legislators.
Yeah.
So the funding that comes in, how does it compare to what was coming from basically the county and from the state? How does it compare in dollar, dollar wise?
There is more money available to the region. Um, we were capped out at thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents per person. And I don't, I haven't looked at the figure recently. Currently, our total per capita amount is about thirty-seven dollars. And there is a graduated increase in the next three fiscal years. The furthest out the legislation went, I believe, don't quote me on this for sure, but it's about fiscal year twenty-five. And I think that that capped amount is forty-seven dollars per person.
It's over forty, I know that.
Yeah, so this fiscal year already, we are realizing about a three million, or no, one point eight million dollar increase in revenue over what, as individual counties, we were able to capture on our local property taxes. Remember that this year, it's a split. So the state set a maximum per person amount that each region would be able to capture. And that's now divided this fiscal year into two amounts. And I apologize, I don't have the exact figures, but our property taxes went down to about twenty-one something, maybe?
So.
And the state is kicking in the other fifteen dollars and some cents per person. Those are all very rough estimates. I'm sitting on my desk, I just haven't.
Because of the split.
Because of the split. So this is a transition year. So this year, all of us as Jackson County residents have, well, every resident in Iowa has property tax on their, on their property tax bill, they will have a mental health levy, which will have been less than what it was in some, for some regions, less than what it had been the previous year. Starting July first, counties will no longer be able to contribute any property tax to the mental health fund. And a hundred percent of the funding will come from the state. The state will send that payment to the regions by the first of each quarter. So there should be the money there for the cash flow.
Can you tell me where the funding is coming from the state? Was it coming from property taxes or is it coming from income taxes? Was it kind of?
I honestly can't answer that.
You know, it's coming from someone.
Contact your senator and legislator. You can get ahold of them, they'll maybe can tell you.
We got a billion dollar hope.
Right. So this is a, a transition year, and it did result in more money to our region. Um, and that amount of money available to the region will go up for the next three years or so. And then I believe actually there's a formula in Senate File six nineteen that talks about how it will continue to be increased, I think, based on cost of living increases.
I think that's it.
But there's just no definitive dollar amounts after about the next three years.
To me, that puts pressure on the boards and whatnot to implement programs that are sustainable. You know, at, I want to say this level instead of this level, so we can catch it, combat it before it gets, you know. But I don't know what kind of programs are in place or are going to be put in place.
Well, yeah, one of the other things that the board did yesterday was they approved a couple of contracts for service providers, and they approved a couple of one-time grant opportunities. Um, but there's also more money there that we have to make sure we are spending.
You just don't go out and spend it either, that's, that's.
We're not, I mean, I'm confident saying we're not.
Usually, our board, the, the voting board, doesn't really, they don't do anything unless the management team has reviewed it and make a recommendation to the board.
Well, that makes sense.
And one of the, one of the things that we did yesterday was for peer support expansion, and that was one point one million, and there were four applicants for it, and three of them were funded.
I, I guess what I'm looking at, I'd like to see like two, three years or not, even maybe next year, I'd like to see results of the program.
Well, and, and we should be seeing results. A couple of examples of things that were in the infant stages of implementing, which are somewhat costly, but we feel it's to the benefit of everybody in the community. The people needing the assistance, the people responding to people needing assistance, like law enforcement. So, um, one of the big things that's going on right now, and this is largely due to the employment of Christine Gratter, the Children's Care Coordinator. She has, in her previous experiences, had contact with an individual by name of Frank Gravalla. And he is well-known nationwide in terms of doing trainings on things like trauma-informed care and how to work with communities and families to kind of address some of the social needs that are out there. And so she has had Frank come, he has physically been here, and he has been here through Zoom to do trainings with different service providers and do listening sessions where they're taking in information. That information is going to be used by Frank, by Christine, and I think largely by Erin Rome from Area Agency on Aging Education Agency, um, to formulate a plan moving forward to how to make trainings available to providers and how to make services available to assist families in need of children that have mental health concerns. So that's an example, that's a process that's starting now, it's going to carry over into the next couple of years. And after we get some of that implemented, and there's more training and more people that work with kids realize they have more support, we should start seeing hopefully some improvement with some of the services that are available.
And it's going to help them recognize signs.
Yeah, the whole continuum, correct. It's going to be, uh, from a preventive standpoint, it's going to be from a treatment standpoint. It should hit that whole continuum. So we're helping people already having difficulty identifying earlier people that might be headed to difficulty with their children or the children themselves. So that's kind of a children's piece of where there's going to be some, I think, requests for some significant training opportunities and other programming that will come in front of the board. Another area is in the area of law enforcement. And, uh, both of you, maybe all three of you heard Jesse and Joe, the cops from San Antonio at the spring school or fall school.
So they're going to be coming here.
Yes, the board has entered into a contract with them to come to the five counties and kind of initially do an exploratory fact-finding of where our law enforcement agencies at with their training and with what the needs that they are faced with on a day-to-day basis. And they're going to come in April for two or three days. I forget exactly, I think it might be three days. They're going to meet with a wide variety of groups.
Well, it's forever growing issue, and it was very, you know, you could forget about that stuff when you, when you say that, but it's very eye-opening what they had to tell you, you know, what they dealt with and how they dealt with it.
And another area we talked about yesterday too is, um, college students and knowing how to get help or knowing, getting, you know, when they're in college, their parents always don't know what's going on and make sure that people can get them help if they need help before it's too late.
Right, so, so those two things I just talked about are examples of things that are stages and have a lot of room for growth, and there will be expenses associated with it. But at the end, we should be seeing some good outcome for the people in the community. What Jack is referencing is another example of something where the board did a commitment yesterday for a marketing program, presented by Gary Mutiva. Some of you might remember him from being on KWQC for, I think he's at twenty years as a news anchor. He has a, a marketing business, and he has embraced what the region is trying to do to help people with their mental health needs in our five counties. So his marketing proposal that he gave to the board spans the entire continuum of ages, college-age kids being one of the focuses in particular, elementary grade school kids being another one, and then also using all forms of social media, so not just TV, but social medias, Instagram, Twitter, TikTok, Facebook, and, um, just getting the word out, saturating the five counties. Hopefully you'll see some of this, either you watch TV or you listen to the radio or you're on some of those social media venues. Um, the board was very concerned about the fact that they feel there's a lot of, there's a core of good services that are out there to help a variety of people at different stages with their mental health concerns. But how do people know that it's out there when they have a need for that concern? Because as human nature tells us, we typically don't pay a lot of attention to things that are out there until we need them. And then when we need them, we don't really have the time to look for them, and we don't know where to go for them. So this is kind of to immerse all this information out there to all of us. So not only for ourselves as individuals, but also that we know there's something there. We have a colleague, a friend, the example they use of the college age was if a college roommate has, you know, a roommate who's struggling, that that healthy person would have seen somewhere maybe in their orientation packet or maybe an information that was sent home to parents of college students about the services that are available to always remind us what's there, so we can help other people. I mean, certainly that happens, and, you know, I will have people ask me about things that because they are familiar with where I work, they're inclined to ask me what's out there. And, and that's, we want more people to have more knowledge about what is available, not just for themselves, but for people that they come into contact with. That's another thing that does not come cheaply. Those were expenses that the board approved yesterday, to put this out for a year.
But I think that the discussion amongst the board members and, and the management team is, you know, we, we haven't done a good job of getting the word out. We provide all these services, we work, you know, have these contracts, but how do the people know?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's to get, and it's edge, it's definitely education, it's a matter of what you do.
Right.
There's no difference than these new radios we're going to buy. You've still got to be educated out of running, where they ain't going to do you a bit of good. So you got to get the education out to the departments for any given situation. You know, it could be, yeah, it could be, what kind of range of, you know, you're talking from five to sixty, you know?
Right.
So what, how many departments or how many associations are we looking at that need to be educated and say, this is what we're offering? How do you get to them all?
It's a lot, and, and we are fortunate here, you know, I think it was in August, the interim city manager had a training for department heads and then a training for, the same training repeated right afterwards for some of the city's employees. And the idea was just what we talked about, not just for department heads and city employees to have that information for their coworkers, but also every time you do that to a group of people like that, you're, you're dispersing it further into the community than we realized. And so we've had some of that here, you know, we had the jail staff be trained by a couple of people from the crisis system on certain things. And so we've been fortunate that we've, we've been able to access some of the training. And I think this media campaign will only enhance people being aware.
Is there something opioid, opioid money coming in? Is that, is that going to go through mental health, or how, how will that be dispersed?
No, I believe, um, that will, it won't come through mental health, it will come through substance abuse. I mean, it's, that's, that's related to more of a substance abuse, but I don't even know where it will come to in the county.
If any comes.
Right. Yeah, so, um, those are examples of things that in addition to the services, we've been talking about the crisis services and the traditional outpatient service providers and the programs like Imagine the Possibilities have for vocational and for residential. These are becoming some of the more value-added services. The other big area where there will be more services will be in the area of children's services. So one of the things the board did yesterday was approve two contracts for two providers. Lutheran Services of Iowa and Families Inc., Lutheran Services of Iowa is looking to expand a program that actually Clinton and Jackson County have had available for a number of years called Step In. And it's kind of a crisis response program to kids that are in crisis. The referral process to that is not. The referral process to that is not one though that the families can make themselves. That has to come through a professional or um, school system, whatever it might be. But that program um, has been here probably for fifteen years. And now it's going to be expanded to other three counties in the region through Lutheran. Um, Families sake will be expanding a program called Family Functional Therapy that currently is available in the region, but not as available out in the outlying counties like ours. And also the referral sources, it's going to be um, more widely available. And it will, it's a program that some of it can be paid through Medicaid that they can bill Medicaid for, but there's a lot of additional contacts and expenses that this contract will be able to allow them to have staff to come out and do the services because they'll have funding um, for them to come out for, to do some of those services that Medicaid won't pay. The, I think you'll be seeing a couple of more contracts like that. And there will also be more care coordinators employed. Uh, largely as a result of the children's system. There will be a uh, care coordinator liaison for um, early childhood for Department of Human Services and for General Court Services, an individual care coordinator for each one of those areas. That those care coordinators, it will be one person covering the entire region to be the that liaison. And then also three care coordinators for children's services for those families that are having very complex needs. And it, the children's system is complicated and the funding is, you know, the especially for those families that have private insurance rather than Medicaid, the funding is sometimes for not as readily available for the more costly services, maybe please placement in a setting called PMS, psychiatric medical institution for children. So there will be more staff coming on board to hopefully also be available so that when somebody calls my office and says, I, you know, I have this uh, fourth grade child and acting out in school and nobody's really sure what to do with them. That's not necessarily expertise that we have. Um, and it takes somebody with a lot of knowledge of the children's system to really call that family back and start working with them. And that's what these care coordinators will be able to do.
I I just think that's a, that's a major issue. When I just, because here's, here's the situation that I see it or hear it. There there's definitely a need for the children's services. But where are the, no, but where are the issues coming from?
Right.
Are they coming from home? Are they coming from, you know, it's a, it's a vicious league that goes back to somewhere.
Right. And so what happens is um, the availability of Medicaid funding, those are medical programs requiring medical diagnosis and parenting skills is not necessarily a medical diagnosis. It's a skills training. And so these kinds of services hopefully will begin to address the ability to offer some of that parenting skills kinds of programs that are not really related to a medical condition. So, yeah, I mean, I I think this is a start to try and help some of those families.
As society is, they don't want to hear.
Yeah, I mean, we can't force people to take the training, but we certainly can make it available. And when we do, we're making more available in the future than we currently have.
Child services needs to be implemented. All the true, you know, the training and whatever you can get. I mean, even the training on, you know, the mental health level where, you know, they're learning also as we go. Instructors or whoever.
Right, right. And that that's the idea behind this, having this gentleman Frank be here to do some of the training to some of the professionals.
I think it really helps having Erin here.
Oh, I do too. Yeah. Yeah, Erin is representative. He's a voting member on the governing board and he's from the area. Yeah, yeah. And he and Christine seem to work well together. So that's a very. Yeah. Um, so that's kind of the direction things are going. That's where some of this extra dollars are being spent. And it may take us a while to see the fruits of our labors, but I do believe that if we continue on this path and a thoughtful process, and that's what this has been. That's why it takes a while to figure out what you need and then how to address the need. I think we'll see some some good outcomes in the years to come.
Well, I thought his presentation yesterday was right on.
Gary M T V's act from the marketing.
Yeah, exactly what we need. We need to get the word out that we are here. And ready to serve.
Right, right. So we are here because the other thing the board did yesterday was approve the contract to sign between the region and DHS. It's an eighteen month contract starts January first. Um, Lori kind of highlighted the goals of DHS during the first eighteen months and the goals primarily are um, to get some uniformity and understanding what the definitions are of certain services and how to report data for certain services. They are really relying on on getting that solidified. So there's consistency across the state. So we'll see how that goes when you have fourteen regions, we still have ninety nine counties kind of thing. But that's one of the goals that DHS is looking at during the eighteen months. They also want to really um, emphasize the importance of having each region having participation in several different things, the CEO meetings. They have established a data analytics group statewide and then there are several subcommittees for certain services called evidence based practices. And DHS has the expectation that every region will have good participation by someone from their region on those various committees. So, um, if that doesn't happen, ultimately there's consequence that DHS comes in and disbands. Reassigns it, yeah. But I'm not really too concerned that that will happen.
Not at least not in our region.
Not in our region, no. Um, I would say those are probably the highlights from yesterday's meeting. And the January meeting and the February meeting as in years past will be the fourth Monday of those two months because in both of those months, there is at least one county in the region that has a holiday on the third Monday.
And you can guess what county that is.
Well, actually, I don't think they have both of them. I think we're the, we might be the only county that doesn't have either one, I think. Uh, but it's a combination from Martin Luther King Day and President's Day. So they've been moved to the fourth Monday of those two months at one o'clock as well, instead of three o'clock. So, any question? Okay.
Well done.
So I don't know what the plan is for the budget session.
I just told him that you might be discussing because there's really not a lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can do that really quick if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that'd be great. So when you go to look at your your budget documents, um, the one department that I pay claims for is the Substance Abuse Department sixty four. I just submitted the same budget as we have had in the past years. Currently, our expenditure is a little low in that area, but Shelley and I talked about it and I'm just really reluctant to reduce any of those numbers. Um, we just never know, substance use continues to be a concern in.
One case could just blow it out of the water.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's Department sixty four. What I turned into Shelley, what always used to come out of Fund Ten, which will not exist as of July one, i- is in the general fund and it is the administrative cost of the mental health department. So it is um, salaries and benefits for myself.
I shook her up yesterday. Now, when do we quit paying?
Yeah.
Hey, quit paying Lynn and Lynn says. And I assured her that she would get her chance.
Yeah. So that was uh, pretty much submitted as this current fiscal year, I might have put in a slight percentage salary increase for myself, but otherwise the types of expenditures. These are the expenditures to keep in mind that once all of our Fund Ten money goes to the region. I believe um, in a meeting that Lisa and Shelley were at with the other auditors and the management team, that it was decided that on a quarterly basis, the individual counties will submit an invoice to the region at the end of each quarter of what the actual expenditures were that were paid out of the general fund for these administrative costs. So I will be submitting budget numbers to Lori. Uh, but I did not prepare them for for you guys because they are budget numbers for the services themselves.
Right.
And it's really going to be the governing board and ultimately the state accepting that that's what our budget will be for services. So I didn't even run those by you because you you don't have any money to pay for those services anymore.
And they're not our responsibility.
No, they're not. They're not the county's responsibility.
They're the regions.
Yes. So that's, I think that's really all I had. I was going to say about budgets from this upcoming year.
And then just to clarify, that is July first, correct? That when this starts to get reimbursed from the region?
Yes, it is. But the question Jack was asking Lori actually yesterday, and correct me if I'm wrong, but at one point, because prior to July first, uh, the region plans to have a process in place to have the money transferred and start having claims paid by the region's fiscal agent, which will be Scott County.
We did talk about that, didn't we?
Yeah. And so Lori's response to you yesterday was Jack, was it April and May?
I think so. And then she said that um, the actual transfer won't be till July first, but that we are going to turn over our money.
Right, well, I think they want it because by midnight June thirtieth, from what I understand, the state is saying all that money has to be in the hands of the regions. Um, I think David is looking at a plan that would have us put that into place in April, May at the latest.
But I think that's another reason that we wanted all of the supervisors from all of the counties to meet so they could go over the process and what they're going to do and when they're going to do it.
Right, right. And how, yeah. Because at some point, prior to June thirtieth, I'm anticipating I will no longer, Bree will no longer be submitting claims to the county to be paid by company dollars. Only for probably, I don't know, a month or two.
Yeah.
It won't be very long. Yeah, but it'll be at the end of this fiscal year. So, okay, any questions about that budget stuff? Sounds good.
Okay. All right.
Uh, this morning I need the motion to approve the minutes of the December fourteenth, twenty twenty one board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion in second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor? I, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and ninety four dollars and fifty cents.
I would make that motion just with the note that there's many passers in this budget or in this.
Bridge is getting paid.
And the architect Steve and that's going into the bond and.
Yeah, we've got part of, yeah, like you said, we've got part of the the jails in there, the bridges in there.
Anybody has any questions, feel free to.
So do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve the claims. All those in favor? I, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the November tenth, twenty twenty one meeting.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes. Veterans Affairs Commission, all those in favor? Motion carried.
I'm going to skip around on my agenda. I'm going to go down to this morning I need a, I had a conversation with Dean Engel from the Together We Build Committee. And he is submitting a bill for fifteen thousand to be paid to John Hanson from Midwest Construction Consultants. So with that, I would need a motion to approve an invoice to, or fifteen thousand to John Hanson for Midwest Construction Consultants for the Together We Built project.
Motion in a second. Discussion.
Um, I mean, I would, I would venture to say that this was part of the contract that was signed with him and just uh, periodic payments.
Right. All those in favor? I, motion carried.
Just as a, uh, uh, an update, I guess. The public hearing was held last Tuesday night, uh, December fourteenth at seven PM by the temporary redistricting commission. Uh, this morning I am officially presenting that map to you. I did send it to you via email, but this morning I am presenting that map to you that we will be discussing at the public hearing um, on December twenty eighth. And I guess we open up the the discussion from either you or from the public. You know, if they have any questions or concerns, the districts were numbered going from east to west, so everything is in order. And um, that's again what we're going to be discussing. This does need to be passed by ordinance and that is part of our meeting on next Tuesday. We are a little bit early. I know that our public hearing is scheduled for ten o'clock. Um, I think probably we should wait till ten o'clock to have that public hearing in case there was any public comment.
But, you know, just a comment on the redistricting, I think the numbers come out about as close as you're going to get. I don't see an issue with the redistricting. We're still in our same district as we were. I'm still in District One. That was the questions that were brought to me on the street. Are you still representing us? And I, you know, and I said, yeah, but you know, in the whole scheme of things, we're representing the whole county, the whole county votes for us.
That's correct. It's, this whole thing is just a residency requirement to run for supervisor. That's all that this is.
The only thing that changed is two and three.
Yeah, it's just the numbering, it changed and it just, so, but you still represent all citizens of Jackson County. So it was a relatively quick meeting on the fourteenth and so I'm kind of glad to have that behind us.
Do you approve it or?
Next week.
Any, any um, reports on any boards or commissions?
Um, I do, we did have another meeting with nine one one as far as the process, how we're going. Everything looks to be in order. As far as uh, we got good news about our structural on the efficiency of our tower, so it's good. And and we've had a lot of people involved in the phone call meeting as far as engineering and installers and and whatnot, just how the process is going to proceed. So, again, it's it's very complicated and you're, you're X amount just sitting listening. So everything is proceeding as expected.
Well, I can't report about workforce because after my mental health meeting, I was late getting on on my iPad in my car in the parking lot at the administrative office in Davenport. And it kept telling me my um, ID code was invalid. So I said something to Luanne this morning when I got here. I said I couldn't call in and she said at four twenty five.
Oh, no, four fifty four.
Four fifty four, they sent out a new.
Why wouldn't it?
So, you know, four minutes, six minutes before the meeting was to be.
Right. And I was off work already half hour. It was a way for you to know.
No. So I I sat there a while and I I did not try to call in on my car phone. So I just thought, huh, I guess they didn't want me. So I didn't, I don't have anything to report on that, but so at this time we'll recess till public hearing at ten o'clock. At this time I'll call the meeting back into o- open session and we are having um, a public hearing on plans and specifications, proposed forms of contract and estimates of cost for the Jackson Law Enforcement Center. Is somebody joining us?
No.
Oh, okay, just we're discussing it.
We're just discussing this.
Okay, at this time, um, we'll open the public hearing. And he came anyway.
So with that being said, and Brett Kilburg just entered, do you have any comments for the public hearing for the Law Enforcement Center? Cost estimate of Law Enforcement Center. Right, here. Hearing on, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
I, I, motion carried.
So with that being said, um, today then I need a motion to approve resolution number eight forty nine dash twelve dash twenty one dash twenty twenty one to adopt the plans and specifications, the proposed form of contract and estimate of cost for the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center. The floor plan has been presented by Rick Widener from Architectural Service Inc. And John Hanson from Midwest Construction Consultants who provided a probable cost. And John Hanson from Midwest Construction Consultants who provided a probable cost of six million, eight hundred and seventy two thousand, eight hundred and ninety two dollars. For a thirty two bid facility with expansion and approximately eighteen thousand, seven hundred square feet. The amount of bid security to accompany each bid shall be in an amount which shall conform to the provisions of the notice to bidders. Approved as part of the specifications. So I'd need a motion to approve the resolution.
So move, second. Motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
I, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Is there any other business to come before the meeting other than our budget work session?
I don't have anything else, I don't. Go back to motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Hi.
I, everybody have a happy Christmas.